Welcome this evening to double check that Kevin's in on Zoom. Rick can't join us tonight. Is it Kevin? Can you hear us?
Hey Kevin, are you there? I have him on text too.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi Kevin.
Hi Kevin.
Talking about dedication.
I know, right? Kevin, where in the world are you?
Literally.
I am in Tokyo, Japan. It's 10:00 AM on Thursday.
Probably it's Thursday.
I don't want to mess with a space-time continuum and tell you what the future looks like.
Well, thanks for joining us tonight. We're going to go ahead and start with a presentation from Dr. Lori Dent. A basic understanding of the strategic plan review process.
Yeah, so we're excited to present this information to you tonight and you can see my colleagues are across from me in case there are questions that come up. We take a lot of pride in the strategic plan because we know that 70% of strategic plans fail without the proper measures to monitor, without a continuous improvement process, without proper alignment. And we're proud that our strategic plan not only has all of the components of an effective plan, but that this plan drives the work, drives the resource allocation. And I mean, it's truly a part of the culture now that is driving this improvement. So like with anything else, when we talk about anything in this district, we always start with our promise. We made this promise in a way that students know that we want them to be known, valued and supported. And we see that happening every day in our schools. We even start, we started to see it in our community, which is, it's really exceptional. Paul and I had the opportunity to go to a blessing movement celebration last night, and it's very much our promise in action, where students are given the opportunity to feel valued, they're supported, they're known by many of our community leaders. And we're happy that this promise has really taken hold. Because ultimately, our goal right there, we want kids to graduate ready to pursue a promising future. And the class of 2036, who are those little ones? They are kinders. So all of those little precious faces we see every day, we want them to graduate and become incredible human beings. I want you to know that tonight is really just a conversation about how we're doing. We know that we are in an incredibly strong district and we have also a lot of work to do. But right now, we're ranked fourth in Pierce County. This came out in the TNT not too long ago. And you can see where the summer school district is, Summer Bonnie Lake School District. And those numbers actually are compared to the state average, but we rank right up there with University Place, Daringer and Carbonado, they're quite small school districts. But in terms of Summer Bonnie Lake, we are we are one of the premier school districts, not just in Pierce County, but the state. Because we are ranked 20th in the state and incredibly proud of that. So and really everyone in this room should take credit for this. I mean, looking at L and Sarah, Beth, Michelle, Mary Lee and Steve and everyone, Jen Black. We like, we built this school district with our community. And we take, we're honored to be a partnership school district. So when we look at these results and we look at these scores, this is the work of many people, many hands, many partnerships. And for that, that is one of our biggest strengths in the school district is we invite people in instead of keeping people out. And English Language Arts, again, we're ranked fourth in Pierce County. Something to be incredibly proud of. So tonight, our purpose really is to just give you a basic understanding of how things are going. And as a school board, you need to know and understand how we monitor and live this plan every day. So I'm hoping that you leave here with a basic understanding of how this plan is monitored, the process that we use, that we hold ourselves accountable to it, we hold other people accountable to it. Give you some information on progress on those five aspirational goals and then talk about considerations and next steps. Because in June, we're going to be coming back to you with some recommendations. And the non-purpose tonight is to go in-depth on each goal because we've done that through these study sessions. And we have a board calendar in front of you to remind you that each study session is its own topic related to something in the strategic plan. Last year, we gave you an overview of each goal. This year, we're going to go a little more in-depth with a, like a specific focus for each goal. And we're going to try to even align that with a school board visit, like in November, where you can visit some classes for intervention. Yeah. So future ready, here we are. You look at, if you look at this slide, and if you remember, I know, isn't that, isn't she just darling? He is, that little smile is, it's so curious and so he's just like wondering what's going to happen. And she was at lunch, by the way. Like getting lunch for the first time. It was, yes, he's just precious, but that's our promise, right? Student learning is at the heart of everything we do. We want to make sure that all of our students graduate with that promising future. So we have both the measures in place to make that happen. And then next to that is effective instruction and everything we do in classroom to make sure that we are providing effective instruction that's professional, that's based on best practice, the latest research. And then outside of that, nothing would happen in this district without our operations team. They make, they make the world go around, whether it's with the temperature in a room, which right now feels pretty good. So thank you Dave Cutts, wherever you're at. But also our finances and how we allocate our resources, how we hire, who we hire. Just making sure that everything is in place and ready operationally as well. But again, everyone works together to make that promise happen. And this is how it works. You can call this a through line alignment, you can call it whatever you want, but what we want to make sure is that that strategic plan future ready gets to kids. We want to make sure that these goals that we've written, that we monitor, everything gets to student performance. So that again, they graduate, they perform, they can pursue whatever future matches their potential and their desires, their dreams. But the alignment is so tight. It's like the, it's like the plan goes in the funnel. And then we come together as a cabinet, directors, and you know that my goals as a superintendent are aligned to this strategic plan. Then the school improvement plans that Kelly and her team work on. I mean, they're just like, they're outstanding. These, these plans are, they are like bold standard. You see them every December. They're full of data and they're just impressive when you, I mean, when you look at it, how deep these principles go and what Beth and Steve do to monitor that. Then principal goals are all aligned to that and teacher goals and then student performance is right there. But this is how it all comes together. And feel free to ask questions as we go. I mean, there's no need to wait until the end. So this is how it works. This is actually pillar four in our strategic plan under continuous improvement. But it's the Plan to Check Act cycle that is probably known to most, if not all of us in this room. But we make a plan, then we take action, we check it, we make sure, is it working? Do we need to adjust? How do we, how do we adjust? And then do we change? Do we modify? And you're going to see some things that we're already considering because some things just aren't. They're just not the way we want it. And I will tell you, we, we have a pretty high standard. If something's not right, we're not going to turn a blind eye to it. We're not going to stick our head in the sand. We're going to fix it, make it better. Because ultimately, that will be better for kids. This is how the, this is how the plan is monitored, like the frequency. So each goal you're going to see has an executive lead. And that executive lead, whether it's Beth, Steve, Sarah. That's Steve, Sarah. They might have weekly meetings, could be every other week depending on what they need to do. But they meet with a team to work this plan, to work their goal, to figure out what's going on, what needs to be done. And then once a month, we meet as a cabinet to look at these goals. Then in February and July, we, we're going to come together as a cabinet, but then with other directors, just to figure out what's, what's working, like how do we assess this? What are we looking for? And then yearly, like we did in August with our leadership team, we celebrate. And then we talk about where we're at. Because what the principals are doing right now is they're updating their school improvement plans and they'll be doing it on Friday with their staff as well. But this, this plan is, it's, it's part of how we do business in this district. Kelly, is there anything else you would add to that?
There's other, I guess, other systems in place as well. So it's really about keeping the school improvement plan alive. And so we work really hard, you know, with the entire team. So principals are looking at their data. So they started back, like Lori said, it really started at the beginning of August where we analyzed the data from the past year. Really looking at why did you get results? Why did you not get results? And then from that, we had a principal retreat where again, we dove into that, talked about like, what are high leverage strategies? Are you just putting things in your school improvement plan as an illusion of doing? Are these really evidence-based practices that will, you know, improve, you know, get higher results for students? And then through that, every month, we have our leadership team meeting. We have grade band meetings in there, again, looking back at the school improvement plan. Sarah does a session in the afternoon around the MTSSD or behavior kind of aspect of it as well. So we're focusing on both academics and behavior. And then we also have monthly principal data meetings where again, like principals are looking back in. Then at the same time, the instructional services team is looking at data, what are we doing? So it's like, it's even like looking at that, there's even more frequency and different, you know, structures and different purposes that are built within that. So that was, yeah, that was a lot, but feel free to ask like any details on any of those. Yeah, there's like so many things on my head of what we're doing, like every single month and it's all scheduled out. And you know, obviously trying to be responsive as to what principals need at a time.
But we're always talking to each other. So if we need something, I mean, bang's right in the mix. If we need more support, if we need a resource. It's almost like a real-time adjustment. So yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot of work that goes into this monitoring process.
Well, it's always assumed that you're doing that, but to hear the mechanics of it and the frequency is obviously very good for us to hear and for the public to hear that it's constantly being monitored and reassessed and changed. And obviously, goals need to be met by constantly assessing how they're doing.
Yeah, exactly. Because again, this plan is how we continue to make progress and we're, and we're seeing results, which is great. And it's just going to make us an even stronger district.
To answer the question on school improvement plans. They're pretty beefy documents, right? And I know that the public has access to them via each school website, correct? Do the schools work on doing a condensed or kind of a, you know, kind of a smaller piece that highlighting kind of like what you guys have done with the strategic plan? I mean, the strategic plan itself is a pretty beefy document, but you've got it down to a digestible. You know, that the, you know, public can view and see and, and so they don't have to read the whole thing. Is each school doing that too, trying to get it down to a digestible part of the public to view?
So we haven't, which we, I mean, we could consider that. Have to think about what that would look like and what information that would contain, but that's certainly something we could, I mean, we could talk about. Yeah.
Maybe it's too much work. I mean, it's directed back at the overall strategic plan noting that each school site plan is a part of that broader picture. I mean, I just throw it out there at it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not needed. If the, if the public's not asking for it, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, is there a way to track how many people actually go on the website and look at their, their school site plan?
Yes.
Don't shake her head, yes.
Yeah. How many? A lot of people are tuning in.
You know, I also think though, that if somebody looks at that on the website, if they have questions, I would hope that maybe they could ask versus maybe having to do a separate sheet of like certain notes of what might be more understandable for them. But I think if they have questions, I would hope they would come to the principal.
Yeah, well, I would hope to the principal too. But I do know that sometimes if you're, if your profession is not education and you see one of those documents, you might not even really know how to read it or what you're looking at to even formulate a question. But I think we've done a good job stilling and putting digestible chunks of information out there in layman's terms for people to look at. And sometimes then that sparks more in-depth questions.
Yeah, so let us think about that and think about what that could look like and what that workload will be, but yeah. This year in August, we took a deeper dive into really looking at it, at the gap analysis and making sure that when we do look at the gaps in student performance, that we're asking the right questions, that we're looking to solve the right problem. So we challenge principals in the whole gap analysis process to spend a significant amount of time investigating the cause and asking questions. And then when they have exhausted those questions, ask some more. Because we want to make sure that we're asking the right question that solves the right problem. And that's not as easy as it sounds without me really taking, taking time to do that. I just, I'm remembering thinking back to the Leadership Team Academy where we, we spent a significant amount of time on this. And I think, I think as educators, we are solution slayers. We just want to get in and solve the problem. And what we're challenging our leaders to do right now is to slow down and to ask questions. Because they will jump right in and try to solve something. And sometimes you just gotta, you just need to, you just need to wait and you need to think and you need to think some more, then you need to get a partner or two or three, and you need to think together. So we're, I mean, this is our gap analysis process that we use, but and it was, it was interesting because they still wanted to go straight to solving the problem. But we backed them up and, and we hoped that by investigating the cause and really identifying the root of the problem, we can make even better strategies that are more effective. The goal one, this is our early years goal. Beth Dykman is the, she still is the executive lead. But these are our third grade goals. And you can see how not only we did as a district, our benchmark was 63.7, we met that benchmark, exceeded it, 67.1. And all of our schools but two met that benchmark. Daffodil Valley, not really sure that that honestly represents their true performance.
I don't mean to talk. Yeah. We had to invalidate one classroom of assessment scores due to testing irregularities. And so unfortunately, it then counts all of those students in as a zero. So that number is impacting our overall district number as well as Daffodil's number. So you know, when I say that, it's, you know, you're that principal, you're that teacher, I know how that feels. But that's, that's really not, that's really not what our district score is for Daffodil. And so it's just, that's why there's little asterisks there where we, you know, we shared it lightly and gently at leadership team. And hopefully I'm doing the same thing here today. So that's why it's so important. Kathleen, I mean, the assessment department is really, we have, we have to follow all of the rules and regulations on, you know, administering assessments because if not, it's just the entire class at times, then that's what happened in this case. So.
Again, you know, we so far exceeded that benchmark that we have new benchmarks for 24, 25. So that's really how we do change this plan in real time. And then again, for math, far exceeded the benchmark, 60%, we met it by 70.4. And again, all of our schools but two met that benchmark as well. That's hard work right there. I mean, that's, I'm telling you, that's a testament to our teachers during COVID. They taught, I mean, they worked so hard, which is why academically, our students are emerging from the pandemic in pretty good shape. I mean, they are resilient, but I'm telling you, it's because of the teaching that happened during the pandemic and how this district responded. That's it. I mean, being fourth in the county and 20th in the state doesn't just happen, you know, hope is not a strategy. That's hard work. So kudos to our, our whole staff.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So I, I mean, that's like a 20-point spread in the ones in the green. If we rule out the ones in the red, because it may be up there were regularities.
Well, there are no irregularities on that.
Okay.
Now.
So Kelly, we've seen fantastic presentations from you over the years. And I know that you dive into the data and really look and seek out answers. But when I see something like that, I immediately think, what, what is Bonnie Lake and Tahali Heights doing that some of the other schools are not doing? And I would like to, you know, if we get some professional development that we need to do. I mean, I, I just think the same goes for, you know, the math scores. What, what is happening at those two top schools and how can we replicate that across the board?
I think that's exactly what we do. Beth had a elementary principal data meeting last night and that's, that's the topic of discussion right there. We talk about collective efficacy and how do all of us own all of the kids? And so that's really been a theme of ours and that's what it is. How, I mean, Beth had them organized in groups last night and talking about what are you doing in your building? How do I learn from you? And we're really like, when you look at that data, you're right, we're diving down to that classroom, to that teacher and that teacher's result. And, and you have to know, right? It's like what Lori says, it's not that root cause, right? It's around why are you getting results as well as why are you not getting results? And so we have to be able to name those things. And if we can, you know, here's what's happening at Bonnie Lake Elementary with the intentionality of, you know, the work that's happening in the PLCs. You know, teachers instructing the standards, they have high, you know, instructional strategies, you know, in their toolbox. And then how do we then use that, replicate that? We're starting some cross-district PLCs where some teachers can then again, start sharing practices. So it's, it's, I mean, it's, it, there's a plethora of work that's involved, but that's, yeah, that's what we're.
Well, I could only imagine how exciting it would be if everyone, all the schools were up at 80 and 85%. I mean, I think we'd all be giddy.
Well, they, they will be. I, I truly believe in that, but they will be.
And the, the principals are like, they're great, they're eager to work together and people really feel this school year, like things are getting back. It's been like a super energizing start and to see the principals in the room and, you know, talking that way and sharing. It's like, it just, it brings like great hope that we can even achieve more this year. So. But yeah, but we're all, we're better together. That's, that's the truth. We all have strengths and how do we bring them to the table together? And yeah, and just, just leverage that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Quick question. Do we see a lot of correlation at the elementary level in kindergarten or pre, pre-K readiness when in, when kids are coming in? And as far as like, you know, if you have, you know, parents at home that are working three jobs versus parents at home, they have a stay-at-home parent or things like that, that, that tend to lend themselves towards kindergarten readiness? You see that, especially when we talk about graduation rates and how it's really hard to catch kids up in the long term? Do you see kindergarten readiness as a factor here?
Going to add anything, but because I know like when they come in at the kindergarten level, there's a clear difference between whether kids are ready to start kindergarten or not. And then it just magnifies through the system. So I think we shared that data too before at a presentation where if kids have those skills coming in, like what their trajectory is for graduation versus kills versus kids who don't. So there's, I mean, there's research that backs it up. It's like, how do you, how do you catching a student up when they haven't had those, you know, early experiences and it's, it's hard, but I mean, that's what we're doing every day.
And that will just tie into next month's presentation, your intervention and how it's that early, often and events that those kids that don't have, that don't walk in the door with the same drinks, you know, materials. Right?
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Kevin. I, you know, I think of the work of Donna Beagle and language deficit of students, they come from homes that experience poverty, you know? And just that language deficit.
Yep.
So Kevin, yeah, you're speaking to our educator heart right now because we, we know who those kids are. Love for every kid to go to preschool or have some pre-K experience, but. Goal two is monitored and managed by Sarah O'Donnell, right behind you, and the fantastic work that she does with her team. This year, we established benchmarks because you have to remember in 21, 22, we did a real soft launch of this plan. We didn't go full throttle because we were all just coming, coming back. And then this year, or this past year, 22, 23 is when we put our foot on the gas pedal and we moved forward. So we established some benchmarks for goal two, that you can see where we're at with each one of those. And then we'll be able to bring you back some, some information soon after students take the CE survey again. But this just gives you an idea of where students are. Sarah, did you have anything to add on that one? Okay. Goal three, this is our fifth grade and eighth grade goal. Fifth grade students, English Language Arts, again, we exceeded that benchmark. We have two schools that, they just missed it, Crestwood and Daffodil Valley. And then if you look at math. Math, math is definitely an area that we, that we need to look at closer.
About kids with fractions, when that fraction, those standards start in third grade, you think about the pandemic and what students started and that whole catching up on all of, you know, ratios, proportions, all of that, that, that's a tough, that's a tough gap. And then as we prioritize standards too, geometry is always a wild card of what's on the SBA. And then not an area that's prioritized and then you notice that as well. So it seems as if that the gap with COVID and the standards had a larger impact on the, the upper grade kids. Then like with third grade, we were able to do that remediation, the gap filling a lot, a lot easier. Whereas here, like you, you can, you see it, you see it happening. It's just those critical points and those skills are just so much more complicated and, and they rely on one another that it's, it's just, it's impacted and the score more. So.
Yeah, Kathleen makes a really good point. These tests are a wild card anyway, right? And it's one snapshot of a student, like a student performance. We have students that are brilliant and talented and beautiful. Yeah, maybe this just isn't the way that they're going to show their performance in math. Unfortunately, this is the way it's measured by the state and how we are required to report. But in no way does it define who our students are as human beings, because we know that everyone has their own talented way of showing performance. And for some kids that test really well, this will, this will be great for them. But yeah, math is. But we'll get there. A grade ELA, two of our middle schools met that benchmark. One just barely, oh, like, I mean, that might just represent a few kids, right? But again, that's, that's a lot of hard work. Eighth grade math. A little bit of a struggle there, but two of our students, or two of our schools met the benchmark. And we'll be looking for higher scores next year and look forward to seeing that.
One thing too, participation matters in the assessments, the, the younger the student, the more they participate. So if a student is absent and doesn't take the test or parent opts the student out, they all go in the system as zeros. And so as we go up in grade levels, you notice that there's more and more students who like opt out, parents don't have them test. And those are zeros. And you get to the high school level, it's even, it's, it's worse. So it's not really, the number, that number that you see has all those zeros added in. And so that's one thing that we go back and we're like, well, how many, how many was that? And then we really rely on schools of trying to track kids down and get them to test on all of those kinds of things. So it's really important, you know, it's like, can we get those kids in the seats tested? So that we really, you know, we have an accurate number of what that is. So, yeah.
Is that an OSPI regulation that says, okay, the kids, the students and the parents have an option and not test? But then we're going to count it as a zero towards your academic result.
Yeah, it's part of that.
It's silly.
Yeah, it's part of that ESSR, the ESSR rules. And as a matter of fact, when you want OSPI and there's the Washington School, it's the WISF. It's how we're rated by districts. As a matter, if you don't meet that 95 participation rate, they actually dock points off of your overall school total. So they really take, they, they take that participation rate seriously. And then in the past, we did have to have schools put in their school improvement plan. It was a requirement if they didn't meet the 95% participation rate, they had to say what they were going to do to get it. They have removed that piece from this school improvement plan, but we still get dinged if it's not 95%. So.
Well, what are some ways we can improve it?
Well, we, I mean, we need to get family buy-in and have students there. I mean, we need students there testing and, and have that belief system that we want you to show what you know, try your best on the assessment. You know, all of that. It's like, and every day up until that test is really your practice. And so it's, it's kind of like last year, we talked about running the marathon, right? You have to do all. And so it's, it's kind of like last year, we talked about running the marathon, right? You have to do all these things ahead of time, but how do we? You know, we.
Well, as a board member, Paul, you're an elected official. I mean, you have, um, more power than you think you do in terms of talking to the people that put these regulations in place.
Sometimes it's like talking to a brick wall.
Well, into our world. We live in a brick wall.
When, when my daughter was in, uh, elementary school, the PTA was very actively involved in, you know, getting. Having people bring in snacks and I mean, like for like almost a month before there was a hint of coming, it's gonna be. I felt really proud as a parent to get my kid involved.
Yeah, the schools do that. So in the springtime, we'll have to like point that out to you. They do, schools will do like pep rallies. Today's the day you're gonna, you know, staff will like wear shirts, shirts, you know, yeah, we, yeah, all those kind of. You know, pump it up, have it be a positive thing, definitely. Yeah, uh, because that all matters, right? It it makes a difference to sell it. That is a great thing. Yeah.
But in high school, we can't make it part of their grade, right?
No. So why is it?
Right, it's not even a participation point, uh, you know.
I don't understand why they make it optional. I just don't. I mean, if, if it's that important, it just seems like you just have to take it. I mean, I remember that from when my kids were really younger, both backways, but, um, everybody participated. I don't remember options.
It's a generation ago.
So goal four is, um. It's really that goal that makes us stop and take a look at how kids are being treated in our schools in terms of discipline. I mean, making sure that they receive that fair and equitable treatment. Uh, appreciate the work that Josh has done on this. Um, Sarah also worked very hard on this, on the school with Josh, but. This is, um, this is really the baseline information that we have to share at this point. And what, um, Josh has done is he's broken this down by just the different race and ethnicity, the different groups. And if you see where I've highlighted in pink, these are the, the groups that we need to take, um, a closer look at. Because this is where we're seeing the disproportionality show up. Um, I mean, for example, if our Hispanic Latino population is thirty-three percent of overall students in the district. And twenty-four percent of them are being suspended or expelled. I mean. There's a, I mean, there's an issue with that, um. You know, about sixty-eight percent of our students are white or identify as white and almost sixty of them are, um, experiencing a suspension or expulsion. And if you look at this low income, students that are coming from low income situations. Maybe twenty-eight percent of our student population qualified for free and loose lunch or identifies low income. Fifty-three percent are being suspended or expelled. Um, that's a problem. Um, I don't know what else to add other than a problem. But it needs, we have to pay attention to this because kids bring different experiences with them to the space we call school. And we have to be able to respond to them in a way that meets them where they're at and makes them better human beings. Students on IP, Karen, where is Karen? Were you surprised at that? Twenty-six percent? No. It's about fourteen percent of our students, um, qualify for special education. And yeah, if you're, I mean, twenty-six percent of our students on IEPs are, um, have received or experienced a suspension or expulsion. That's, so you're not surprised?
I'm not surprised.
Yeah. So these are the areas, um, that, uh, like Kelly was saying, Sarah works with principals, um, once a month for a few hours. On discipline, has been working with all of our schools on restorative practices, different approaches to discipline. Making sure we keep kids in more than we kick kids out, um, but also knowing that students need to be held accountable. It's just, how do we do that in a way that? Is a teachable moment, um. But these are, I mean, those are the four areas. David, anything from your perspective?
Yeah, I think the one thing I would add is, we're just in a meeting about this today. And we talked about, you know, we don't make a change at the point of suspension. Right? That's really easy. You could, you could cut the suspension rate away by just saying, I'm not going to suspend kids. But you don't, that doesn't change the environment in school. And so the work that principals are doing, um, as supported by Sarah and Josh and Dr. Marburg and Beth and Steve and others. Is how do we make changes way back here around making sure we have shared expectations? We're reading behave, making sure we're approaching behavior with the same way we approach academics. Are we teaching behaviors, assuming that it's and not won't? Right? And so I think that's where the focus of the work has been, which then, as you follow that through line, will result. In fewer suspensions, but if we know you can't just make meaningful changes just at the point of suspension. That's just a paper tiger, right? What you have to have to do is work to change the behavior way back here. So that they're not doing behaviors that, that merit a suspension.
And do we have relationships with students? Do we know them? Do they feel valued and connected to their, to their school, to their learning environment? Do they feel supported? It's all the things that we need to have in place.
Well, I think that just ties back in. We actually, goal two and four meet together because this work is inextricably connected. When you look back to the percentage of kids who feel safe, right? And the percentage, which is really hard to measure because there's a lot of other things that someone experiences generalized anxiety in their life. They may never feel safe anywhere, let alone in school. But we can measure whether or not they have an adult in there at school that they identify that cares about them, something that they can go to. And so as we increase that number, and then we increase, you know, the work that we're doing around positive behavior intervention supports. And around restorative practices and all of that, then that goal two work and goal four work tie together.
Any questions?
Yeah, you may not have an answer, but I mean, are there any places where you can find an example? Where, um, districts or organizations are giving the results they want? I mean, some of this seems, sounds like, like theory. Is there a place that is actually, if, if it is, so for example, IEPs? Uh, because at the bottom line, it's at twenty-six percent, but it's roughly thirteen point seven percent. If the goal next year is to get basically on parity or on par and then start to reduce it from there. Is there any examples you can find that you can study and look and bring with ideas that it actually achieved parity?
Oh, I'm sure there are, yeah.
I, I mean, I know experientially, right? Better principal work, I've seen it work. And as you implement, uh, MTSS behavior, right? Um, and work through those tiers, you see a reduction of the gap. And we see that in our own district where there are places where the gaps are smaller than other places as they continue to do the work around. Uh, belonging, around teaching on behaviors. And so I think we've seen it in our own district that we know that it can happen on a systemic level. As Kelly says, we have that shared efficacy. Um, and I think one of the things that we're doing with our, uh, professional learning structures this year is really around that shared efficacy. And so looking at, okay, what is your school, school doing? What are your results? What are you doing that leads to those results? So that we can replicate those, recognize that you can't always just cookie cut, you're not going to be able to cookie cutter it, but you can apply those principles.
So, and I think that's a great point where you said, we see these results in our own school system. Maybe next year, we can have a table that actually kind of look where we can see how. One of the top schools, I don't know, they've, they've reduced, but we can ask, okay, we know what schools where it's working. Which ones need to improve, kind of like the academic side.
When we, what we've seen is that each school, they do have their own personality. And, and again, this is district data. Um, so if we did show you, I mean, we could break this down probably in fifty different ways, um. But that's where the school improvement plan comes into, into play. And that's where Beth monitors elementary, Steve monitors secondary and. And really ask those tough questions about, are you getting the results that you want? And if you're not, what's the support you need? What's the training? And that's how we keep this plan alive and how it holds us accountable to these students. Because I mean, these numbers represent kids. Um, and that's. That's our, that's our business, right? It's that's the center of that target that we want to make sure every kid is in class learning. And that's what Sarah's working, um, and working so hard to keep kids in, right?
The other thing I was going to add to was, you know, these numbers tell stories. And too often, we jump to accumulation and, and become judgmental. Become curious, dive in and then look at the individual pockets. And then look at the individual pockets as they improve over time, because telling a story. And it's all data is, is good information and we need to look at it. But that's another way to look at this, is you can dissect that number guaranteed. Um, care to dissect that number into pockets all over the district and then go back. And then look at each individual, individual school and then look at the improvement that's happening over time. And that's another way to look. We continue to move. Then I realized this is baseline data. And some of it's started.
Um, so baseline data, David, this is all for baseline, um, we want to see kids taking more advanced coursework. And there are a lot of kids that are doing it.
Frankly shocked at how high that number was.
Yeah. So a ten percent increase is going to be a, that's going to be a tall stretch, but we'll, we'll make it. We, we, I mean, part of our job is to eliminate barriers that provide equitable opportunities for every student in this district. And when we see this, we're doing something right because a lot of our kids are.
Those are individual high school students who are taking at least one class. So like, Paul, if your daughter was taking four AP classes, she only counts as one. Yeah. So this is individual kids. So nineteen hundred eighty-three students last year took at least one advanced class. They count one time. So many kids take two, three, four, five classes in a year. So, yeah, that number, I, when I shared it with Laura, I was like, oh my goodness. The goal, like, oh my goodness. So that's really, that's an aspirational one too, um, to get up there. Yeah, I, it's amazing how, it's, uh, it makes me so proud of our students and what's, you know, what, what they're choosing to take for course offerings. Because they really, you know, they're, they, it is choice within the twenty-four credit requirements, right? So, yeah, it's amazing.
It makes you wonder, it is so high, but then because we have an optional state assessment. We end up with lower scores than we may otherwise have.
I know, I know.
For the state assessment. And then goal five, Chris Turner was the executive lead on this last year and, um, Steve Shulwin and his team are taking this over. But your goal five is like, that's my heart. Um, and that's the heart of this district. Uh, we want students to get to graduation, get a diploma and become incredible human beings. And Paul, you want to hear something that doesn't make sense? And Karen, you didn't think I was going to let this go like ever, and I won't because our community-based kids. You know, uh, they are, they're always counted as a zero. Because their IP team determines that they need to stay in school until they're twenty-one, they are a big fat zero on our graduation rate. And I just think that that is, um, ridiculous. Yes, I mean, like. How does that even make sense?
That's what I'm adding, that's that's another automatic zero, right? But those kids are staying with us.
Yeah.
And is that a state thing or a federal thing? Is the automatic?
Well, I think it's, it's state.
And students, IDA students, these are thirty-year-olds, twenty-one-year-olds. And so if they qualify, uh, to go to school beyond, you know, senior year, then we must.
Yeah, right. I meant county has a zero on the test for the graduation rate. Is that a state thing or a federal?
Yeah, I mean, it makes absolutely no sense, however, regardless. So in two thousand sixteen, that's when, um, that's when I started as superintendent, we were eighty-four percent. And now we're at ninety-two percent. Um, our benchmark was ninety-three. We, we've just missed it by one percent. And this is the on-time graduation rate as well, but. Man, we're making progress. Like, we're getting there, which is fantastic because ninety-two percent means ninety-two percent of those students can go on. And be something incredible. They have the world in front of them. And honestly, in this district, at eight percent, we find you. And we don't, we don't take no for an answer.
That's four year, right? So I mean, you've seen the data where we're still keeping students in the fifth year and, and that number is even higher.
And we have open doors now, which is a program that helps students graduate, um, or even help students, you know, with their GED. But, um, we want students to earn a high school diploma. And we're getting it.
And really at that level, if this is a, it's, the systems and structures really start becoming very individualized by students. Or by what that student needs. And, um, I mean, I think we've shared before, like what the data looks like for that last, you know, few percentiles of students. Like what kind of supports and barriers that they faced in life? And it's really, it's, what does that look like? What does it look like earlier? I mean, we have students enroll with us. And they're, they have zero credits. We just had a senior enroll zero from another district. And so, you know, like what, what do you do? You know, you have a seventeen, eighteen-year-old child with zero credits. And then, you know, it's, it's those kind of things that are knocking on the door all the time. And so it's a very individualized plan. And here's what we can do. Once we get you this credit, you can go to this program and then. But even with all that work, sometimes that shows up here and you don't see the ninety-eight. But no, what's important though is that, that, you know, you could sleep at night that that student has a plan. We have a path. What do you want to do in life? And even though it's not, it's not, it's not going to be the graduation here, but it's still putting that student on the project out for them to have a successful productive life. So that's, and there, and every one of those at that point, it's a story behind every student, whether it's, you know, assistance, problem, uh, you know, whether it's. You know. I think as you guys were talking, that's what I keep thinking of, like these numbers, I appreciate so much. And I appreciate you looking at all the numbers, right? Like looking at the good and then ones that we can improve and just being really transparent about that. And the numbers are important, right? But when you start thinking about those individual kids and their stories and what they're bringing to school every day. And the hard work that goes be, behind those individual plans and getting kids moving forward, it really is, um. It's a beautiful thing. And you've said it numerous times about how much work goes into each child. Um, and you know, we're just looking at numbers, but you know, you think about a child who already speaks, you know, a language. And now is trying to learn a new language and try and navigate this. Or you're thinking about the student who goes to school all day long and then goes to work to help pay mortgages. Like, these are real kids and real stories. And, um, I, I just appreciate the way that you can speak to that part too. You know, you're, we're looking at numbers, but you can also say, you know, I know that this child came with zero credits and we have, you know, we're, we're working with open doors. Or we're working with Eli or it is very individualized. And I just, um, I just appreciate that so much about this plan, um, as you speak about the different pillars.
Well, that's our promise, yeah, that we know them, they feel valued and that we support them. And this is where Michelle Lewis and CTE really helps, uh, get this graduation rate. I mean, you've heard me say this, I'll say it again. Uh, thirteen of our students graduated last year with full-time jobs at Boeing.
Yeah.
So it's all the programs that she brings in that keep kids interested in school, engaged and. By like employed, uh, they can get their paracertification through our teaching academy. They can, uh, with heritage Spanish, become an interpreter. I mean, like. Yeah, it's, uh, it is, it's, and so thank you to Michelle and her team for continually like looking at what's next. In terms of like market or like the, the, the market industry and what we need to offer. So, I mean, a lot of hands going into this work. Brilliant team. The pillars in our strategic plan help us, they help us execute, uh, the, I mean, the body of work that happens in this district on a daily basis. Whether it's Merrily, um, at the family center with those strong partnerships, um. Whether it's Brian Shearer and the safe culture that he's helping, um, bring to each one of our buildings or professional learning that Kelly and her team. With Michelle, Beth and Steve, they all, you know, work together. And that cycle of continuous improvement that you see in front of you, um, this is just one sliver of the continuous improvement. But this happens in every aspect of our work. And then ultimately the teaching and learning, they all come together to hit that target of a hundred percent graduation. And, yeah, we do believe, I mean, it's just, it's apparent that we believe in this, we are core, that every student, they deserve this. And our operation staff, yeah, I can't thank them enough, from Elle who tells our stories. To Bang who manages our finances, Marion, who gives us great advice. I mean. You know, Brian Kaelin in athletic, Pam in transportation, I mean, they're all there sharp. She feeds them every day and we will still keep fighting for free meals, right, Merrily?
Yes.
Yes, um we will testify and we will keep testifying. We have two schools that qualify for free meals, but. Natural and food became a, like a, I don't know, it was just like a, just a basic right. So anyway, with that. And Robin, technology, you've met Robin. Who said to the Philippines, see the sons getting married. So here's what we noticed after a year. We think that um we'd like to simplify some of the goal lan, the goal language just to make it a little more um digestible. Uh like goal two could easily be like attendance and safety. Uh instead of. The long lengthy goal that. We call whole child anyway, I mean. So you might see some recommendations to just simplify some of the language. We've considered collapsing goal four, um putting part of it into goal two. Maybe some of it into goal five. We're, we're gonna look at this and maybe make goal five the operational goal, so it's not a standalone, but it's part of the. Five aspirational goals that before is a little out of place and it kind of belongs into maybe two different pots. So we might, we might consider that, um and we might just consider revising goal four altogether, especially in terms of that academic acceleration. So. So putting on that, putting that on your radar. Um and then we do want to explicitly incorporate a symbol for multilingual learners um into the gold areas. That is a demographic we are struggling with.
I think our number as of yesterday was seven hundred nineteen ML students in our district. So we are climbing like crazy. So. It's, yeah, it's a, yeah, area of need and definitely, yeah.
I admit I don't have all the goals memorized.
Yeah.
So uh broadly topic, goal four is which portion?
Yeah, goal four is where we talk about disparities.
Okay.
So it's disparity in discipline and then it's also where we talk about um Ida, percentage of students through an advanced program.
Like goal two?
Goal two is the one where we talk about attendance and safety and it's the whole child.
Goal five?
Graduation.
I'm glad you haven't memorized.
So what's next? We keep the strategic plan a priority and we work the plan. This plan uh doesn't sit on a shelf and it doesn't gather dust. Because we won't let it. Uh it's too important to us. Um. Guilty in December, like we mentioned earlier, that the school improvement plan will reflect the plan to mitigate many of these gaps. Um so that we continue increasing performance. Uh the board presentation for quality seven hundred, um. Young folks provide a specific areas of focus and your board calendars in front of you, so you can follow along with that, board visits. Um November should be fun. So that, um I appreciate uh Kelly and Beth and Steve working, put something together. So you can see what's really happening in our intervention buses and then. Then, you know, we'll come back in June and provide you with some recommendations without any significant changes. But um that's. That's what we do. Anything else?
Good presentation.
Great. Well, really good.
Wonderful. A lot of work went into that.
I mean, you've heard me say this a thousand times, but I'll say it a thousand one. Uh the people in this room right now make this work happen and. You should be in like grateful for this team, um and the, the brilliant minds that go. Uh that, that put their hands on this work. Incredible people.
I agree, super fortunate. Anything else? Kevin, you good?
I'm all good. Thank you. That was great.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, we have two things for information, uh two resolutions there, the EPO levy resolution. Capital levy resolution for information only. Uh it's listed as first reading. Um and any board discussion for this evening?
Well, so I went to the WADA general assembly, we. Spent two days updating the different um. Resolutions, uh they are understanding um legislative position. I'm glad it was over. It was long. They used to take like four hours. Now they, they're, you know, two days is a bit much. I'm glad I could zoom in, but they didn't even have very many breaks. Anyway, they've updated all the positions that got approved and um. There are two hundred and twenty-five positions. We didn't go through all of those, but that's how many standing positions they had. Was asked us to select um our top ten priorities for our district. I've talked with Lori, yeah, with Lori, I sent this in, I'm gonna read these top ten. If anybody has an interest, I have three copies of a, a little, you know, from WADA. It fills out what these top ten are. I'll have three copies. If somebody wants one, they can email me at. Paul underscore Williams at sumner at D dot org. I will send you a PDF with more information. So, here they are. Support for special education programs. Amplify, I'm sorry. I take my. Go after their, their bifocals, so. Uh, Am, Apple-funded uh staffing levels. Transportation funding, technology funding, McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act funding. Career and technical education funding, fiscal notes and unfunded mandates. Funding safe, healthy, contemporary school building. Enhanced funding for transitional bilingual education. Expanding access to equitable funding for all dual-credit options. And again, that was the top ten. If. It's open for discussion. If you, someone wants me to do something different, I've gotta have the top ten into WADA by the end of the week. So. Kevin, did you like these or is there one that you, did you have a chance to look at all two, two hundred and twenty-five and pick something different?
Uh you know, two hundred and twenty-five is definitely, you gotta skim that really quick and look for keywords to, to. Point out and look at more deeply, but I do think that um that I'm all good with all of that. Appreciate the work on this.
All right, I'll submit these in the next couple of days to one.
Thank you again for doing that. Appreciate your representation and work on the time.
You're welcome.
Any other items for discussion this evening? No from Deb. How about you, Kevin?
I'm all good. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that. Kevin, safe travels to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks for joining in.